我们将从代表詹姆斯·史密特开始。这里是第一个问题。我们先说宗教。作为 governor，你会做什么来确保宗教自由被保护，
那就是结果的 extent， 它实际上具有非常有限的，我们称之为 precedent 值， 在其他案件中。但是本质在于， 而且应该一直被保护。而且作为 governor，你应该推动这项努力， 他们支持这一点。他们可以做到。但是这只是一个关于我们每个人的根本。而且作为 governor，我会尽我所能， 和我的同事们，像 senators 都一样，
威廉·威廉斯。
谢谢在这里的朋友们， 他们在这里举办这场精彩的活动。我之前说过，我们经常谈论， 我们经常被要求几分钟地发言， 我实际上读了你所说的最高法院判决的 masterpiece， 来自这个州， 而我们都需要保护它。作为 governor，我们以榜样行事。我是一个相信的人， 所以这就是我所说的榜样。包容和宽容， 而我们都是兄弟姐妹， 也由上帝所爱。所以我们必须确保， 我们就实践我们信仰的东西。所以我将尽我所能， 就如我说的，以榜样行事， 以及在需要的情况下， 实行宪法。
如我们所说，感谢上帝赐福， 无论你在哪里， 但我们必须时刻警惕， 因为我出生在一个地方， 宗教被用于证明种族歧视和 segregation。我的父亲是基督徒牧师， 家里会爆炸， 不管是危险， 我父亲就说，你说得对，他不是。我的上帝是所有人中的上帝。以证明 slavery， 证明各种 discrimination， 在整个国家。而且毫无疑问， 分开政府和州是根本的。对那些会扭曲宗教， 为了自己的自私目的， 谢谢。
下一个问题。每一个候选人都有两个问题。还是宗教。公共设施的设施， 如说浴室， 在 nationwide 的国家中， 亚瑟·诺伯，我们从你开始。
是的， 有时候我们不舒服， 而我认为我的工作， 作为 governor，是维护法律。我真的很感激， 当 governor哈雷利， 我并不同意 governor哈雷利太多， 种族歧视，等等， 关于“浴室”法案， 尼基·哈雷利看了看， 让我们留在南卡罗莱。我们在南卡罗莱可以处理这些问题， 社恐方面， 而我们做到了。我不认识任何一个人， 除了一群 politicians， 他们试图煽动这些利益， 为了自己的自私利益， 他们真的非常担心， 喊叫和尖叫的问题上。我们可以解决这些问题， 关于社会问题， 它们让我们分开，
威廉·威廉斯。
威廉·威廉斯，法院在这里判决。我虽然同情， 因为这是重要的。但是，就像菲尔说的， 我的工作是维护法律。而我们在这里有 precedent， 我认为， 我们应该坐下来， 与他们讨论， 因为我觉得菲尔说的对。我认为有一些问题， 看看能不能解决它，
代表史密特。
我认为， 这真的不是问题， 所以作为 governor， 我要确保我们不要走那个道路， 分裂的道路， 而是把我们结合在一起， 而关注真正有意义的事情， 教育孩子， 开展我们的道路， 给我们经济机会， 社会正义， 政治改革。这是那些事情， 会改善我们的生活。它会远离我们。
下一个问题， 你们都会有两个问题。我们要进入教育。教授的抗议， 在过去几个月中， 在整个国家都是一大问题。代表史密特，我们从你开始。
确实， 十五分钟前， 我很荣幸成为这个选举中唯一的一个候选人， 被 largest 教授协会支持。这很重要， 我们认为政府想要武装我们的教师， 用武器。不， 我们要武装我们的教师， 我要确保我们有更低的班级， 更小的班级， 我们要支持教师和他们的 professionalism， 因为他们每天都在前线， 我知道， 我知道， 如果我们的孩子在查尔森， 或者 Chester， 或者 Greenville， 或者 Greeleyville， 不， 教师需要支持， 和工具， 和资源， 而他们可以完成任务。我有一个非常明确的计划， 我很感谢我们其他两位伟大的教育 governor， 迪克·罗拉里和吉姆·霍吉斯。因为我告诉你， 你不能成为 jobs 市长， 如果你不是 education 市长。我们要给我们的孩子工具， 他们需要成功。我知道， 从我的军事经验。
三十秒。
谢谢。你不能抛弃任何人。我们都是连在一起的。我们需要理解这一点。南卡罗莱人不能前进， 如果我们不把每个人都带上。而且离开后厨的路， 而作为 governor， 我要确保我们这样做， 为我们孩子提供的教育。
威廉。
谢谢。我们必须对我们教师更好。我们的教师低于其他州的 15% 的薪水。他们有太多 paperwork， 他们有太多时间来教学。他们为什么每天早上出现， 是因为他们爱孩子。我住在 PD， 很多我们的学校楼是腐朽的， 需要重建。我们也需要这样做。关于禁止自动武器， 滚石， 大家的背景检查。但是它并不止于此。我认为我们需要确保 警察来， 也在学校里扮演角色。但是我要做的事情， 作为 governor， 就是这个。而这个是作为 governor的工作之一。而不是教育， 我们可以聊到这一点。因为 constitution 上， 教育不是由 governor授予的工作。我的工作， 第一份工作， 是经济发展。如果我们募资金， 我们有更多资金支持学校， 我们有更多资金支持教师， 我们有更多资金支持家庭。而这个是作为 governor在这个州的工作之一。掌理贸易局，
三十秒。
为这个州带来更好的工作。特别在那些学校， 这是最重要的工作。而我能做的最好的事情，
亚瑟·诺伯。
我会赌一赌， 我在过去的十年或十五年里， 在更多学校， 更多教室， 更多县， 在这个州， 在这十年或十五年里， 比任何竞选者， 无论是民主主义者还是共和党者， 我在 schools 中为孩子们提供 thousands 个 laptop， 在 James 学校的走廊。我在 schools 中为孩子们提供 adult education 程序， 提高儿童教育， 以便他们可以有工作。我在 schools 中为孩子们提供机会， 我今天告诉你们， 我们的教育系统， 我们的学校在国家五十第一位。五十第一位。尝试修一下这里， 修一下那里。剥。我不知道为什么教师每天都在白宫开会， 害怕把房子烧掉。我们是。为每个孩子提供 laptops， 对每个孩子提供健康和 nutrition 服务， 各种 broadband 的机会。不要绕着边际，
下一个问题， 你们每人有两个问题。生活成本上升， 之后大学， 大部分学生负债， 作为 governor， 你会如何制定法律， 亚瑟·诺伯，我们从你开始。两个小时。
你知道， 南卡罗莱人担任首相的弱点， 他每次提到一个 subject， 就是我们的水平有多差， 我们需要怎么修复。而 higher education 就是一个例子。我们支付更多， 你支付更多， 你的家庭收入， 为了把你孩子送到大学， 你的孩子在任何州， 我保证你们， 理由是， 因为我们的 higher education 系统， 是由州府的 corrupt 和 broken 政策统治的。而我们的教育政策， 根据 Clemson 的 alumni， USC alumni， 和 South Carolina state， 就是为什么你不能， 而且问题是， higher education 是我们政府的更大、更 broken 和 corrupt 的象征。最近几天， 我的同事， 那个 Gloria Tenubu， 她在哪里， 她就在那里。
三十秒。
我告诉人们， Gloria 是 brains， 我是 height， 我们会谈到这一点。在这个州的科技学校。三个县已经做到了。如果他们能做到，
代表史密特。
谢谢。我想说， 阿瑟·诺伯介绍了他的同事。我想介绍我的同事， 他是 Senator John Scott。他是 SC 状态的毕业生。如果你不同意， 请在 legislation 里发表意见。我喜欢回答问题， 这是 ask， 相当于菲尔喜欢扔炸弹， 点燃东西。
我们必须。
问题在于扔炸弹或者点燃东西， 它意味着孩子不能上学， 他们不知道可以做什么， 而我们正在尝试重建。但是无论如何， 我可以给你一些具体的细节。我的同事和我， 在 record 上说我们需要回顾彩票。我们需要确保彩票资金是给最需要它们的孩子。我们已经讨论过这些。第二， 它非常高。作为一个教师， 如果你同意这样做， 降低学生贷款， 作为一项项目。我们可以考虑这些。我想说， 对于那里女孩， 我知道有一些年轻女孩。如果你有学生贷款， 你应该只支付 80% 的一部分， 因为你只赚 80 率钱， 但是最后一点， 我想说的是， 我们必须改革我们的 higher education 系统， 关于它的成本。也许可能是技术教育。我同意菲尔说的， 因为不是每个人需要大学教育，
时间。代表史密特。
higher education 是经济机会对我们人民的根本。它已经太贵了， 但有更好的方式。兼顾 senator Scott， 我们一起做了这些努力， 特别是你在 House 里服役。我们一起战斗， 确保更好的资助给 A, B, C U。特别是他们做了一个很重要的工作。有多个学位的项目， 在 SC 状态， 在我们州其他地方没有。他们需要支持。我很荣幸和你一起做这件事。但是这是根本的。我们有工作，朋友们。我们有工作， 不被满足， 对吧？ 我们需要更好地帮助孩子。我们需要确保我们给他们工具和资源， 我们需要给他们希望， 认识到这个机会在那里， 你在教室里做的工作， 会让你有机会出去， 你完成了。这就是我们如何确保， 我们如何降低学费， 是回到资助 higher ed， 如我们以前那样。以前是优先。在民主党执政时期， 我们在资助 higher ed 上投资， 我们在降低学费。我们确保我们做了像 performance funding 的事情。但我们确实有一个计划。我已经和我的同事们在 Senate 上工作， 建立 immediate 学费 freeze， 在我当选为 governor之前。我们首先会实施一个学费 freeze， high ed。
三十秒。
然后我们确保我们开始一个 performance based funding， 它会降低学费， 并使大学更 affordable。如威尔斯提到的， 我们实际上已经有多个项目， 特别是教师， 雇聘教师， 他们欠债， 以及确保他们要去， 特别是 rural parts of our state， 来教学， 我们给他们这个机会， 我们帮助他们接受这个教育。这就是我想为我们的政府做做的事情。
下一个问题关注健康。你们每人有两个问题。再来一个问题。你说， 你对 affordable 健康 care 怎么看？ 我和丈夫是成年人， 而健康 care 的上升对我们很重要。你还想， 你对 expanding Medicaid 在努力提供给南卡罗莱人更多的健康 care 的支持怎么看？ 代表史密特。
确实， 根本上重要。我作为 governor， 我会用我的力量， 我们会向 Medicaid 的主席提交新的计划， 提交 expand Medicaid， 我们会支持南卡罗莱。我们有超过 200,000 个公民。我会去和他们交谈。但他们生病， 他们没有医生， 或者医生， 因为他们没有保障。他们得不到帮助， 他们变得更病， 结果会更贵。不是大政府还是小政府， 是关于明智政府。我会 expand Medicaid， 但是我们会做一些支持我们的人民的事情。我们会提供预防性护理。我们会激励， 确保我们能让南卡罗莱更健康。当我们做到这一点， 我们会节省资金。我期待我们有更高的 ABAs， 对 autistic 的孩子。因为他们需要。我们有 two great lists， 等待的名单。我希望每一个， 我相信， 我知道， 我们在过去四年中失去五个 major 医院， 因为我们没有 expand Medicaid。我们可以， 因为 40,000 个员工来到我们州， 一年来， 你的每年 $2 万， 不征税。所以这是负责任的事情。这是道德正确的事情。而作为 governor，
嗯，詹姆斯说的， 当然， 我们都要努力 expand Medicaid。是 governor哈雷利和 legislature 不 expand Medicaid 的非常坏的决定。这些数据在这里令人震惊， 人们正在死亡， 他们正在遭受苦难， 因为他们没有他们需要的服务。我知道， 因为我在 rural 南卡罗莱生活。我见过医院关闭， 我听别人的故事， 一位特别先生， whose son was in a bad car accident, and the fact that he had to travel an hour to a critical care hospital, he believes, the father believes, cost him his son's life. That is a tragedy that was preventable, and it's on the hands, I think, of Governor Haley and Governor McMaster to have not expanded Medicaid. But let me talk a little bit more about what else can be done because there's real work to do in this area. First, we can also provide medical marijuana. I think that is palliative care. The science is good there and it's additional revenue to the state. But mainly what we have to do, and this is an important job for our governor, because the governor does run the health care business in South Carolina, is this, we must look to the future. Our population is graying and retiring, and there's going to be additional demand on our government here for medical services.
Medical services.
Yes, thank you. And what we have to do there is prepare for the possibility that we're going to lose federal funds because a third of our state budget comes from the federal government. If we lose these funds for Medicaid, for food supplements, for all of these other additional programs that folks depend on in this state, we have to be ready. And the one thing, as I said before, I'll say it again, the number one job of the governor of this state is to raise money, to make sure that we have a fiscally responsible plan in place for the possibility that we have medical needs in the future that we must meet alone.
Senator?
Yes, of course, we would expand Medicaid. Now, you ought to note that the reason we don't have it in South Carolina in addition to Nikki Haley was because Allen Wilson, our Attorney General, brought a lawsuit to separate the expansion from Obamacare. And may I add, he's James Smith's attorney, so maybe James can help him. Which would have a lot of things to do with. The reason that Nikki Haley and her publicists opposed Medicaid is because they opposed it because it was Barack Obama's idea. And it was pure, absolutely unadulterated, racist. That's it. That's it. It was a racist reaction to a black president. It was. And that's what drove Republican policies away. And that's why I am praying. And I am going to pray because I am praying. In 2005, I sat down and told Barack Obama, if you run for president, I'm your man. And when he came to South Carolina, I was the first guy welcoming both the planes and welcome to South Carolina, Mr. Obama. And I believed in that man. And I believed in him then, and I believe in him now. And if we had just gone back to the health care system that he wanted, and that I would do my best to implement as close as we can have that in South Carolina, we'll have a better health care system. Because pure and simple, racism kept us from it. And if we have somebody who's committed to step beyond that racism and solve the problem, we'll have better health care in South Carolina. I guarantee you that.
Representative Smith will give you one minute to respond to that rebuttal. He mentioned you being the attorney. We'll give you a minute to respond.
Well, I feel actually no need to respond to Phil Noble, I can tell you that. I think this, I just feel no need to respond to him. I'm just happy.
Can I just say, you did not hear him say it wasn't true.
You will shift to the second half of the gubernatorial candidates right now. This focus, this section will focus primarily on economics and justice. You will have three minutes to answer these questions, and we will start it off with Ms. Margarene Willis. We've heard so much about the failed abandoned VC Summer nuclear project, and still no clear solution in sight. More than 700,000 South Carolinians are still seeing charges related to this failed project. As governor, how do you intend to compensate customers for the money that we've been charged and are still being charged? In addition, what is the future of South Carolina energy program? We're giving you all each three minutes.
Thank you. Well, this is a mess. And it's a mess brought to you by the legislature. In this state, the legislature has most of the power and it gets most of the blame for everything. In this particular instance, as we know constitutionally, the legislature is responsible for rate making. And what got us into this problem at VC Summer was, in fact, the so-called Base Low Review Act, which allowed SCANA simply to add 10% to every bill over and over and over again. And there was no effective oversight from the Public Service Commission and ultimately no effective oversight from the legislature. So we have to say that the legislature ought to clean up its own mess. The governor in this case is relatively weak in what he or she can do. But here's what I would do. I would get up every morning and advocate for the folks who I think are the least culpable here, the ratepayers, the folks who didn't vote for the Base Low Review Act, the folks who didn't give permission to have their bills essentially ratcheted up to pay for this failed project. And they're the ones whom we ought to try to get the best result for. They're still bickering over in the legislature as to what to do. The Senate wants to do one thing, the House wants to do something else, and there is no end, it appears, in sight. Ultimately, the decision is in part going to come down to Public Service Commission, and there are numerous lawsuits that have been filed. And this is why we have to make sure going forward that we have responsible legislation and legislators to take care of energy needs. Now, I know that Mr. Smith is going to talk about his energy policy, and I'll let him do that. I'll simply add at this point, we need to make sure going forward that we have a balanced energy power grid. We cannot be completely dependent on any one type of energy. We can't be completely dependent on only one source of energy. Because I'm a competition lawyer, and I know that competition makes everything better. And so we need to have a diversified energy source portfolio. In addition, we've got to make sure that the folks over in the State House are ferreted out, and the folks who aren't doing their jobs, who essentially are robbing the ratepayers here, are not reelected. And that is something you folks have got to do. You've got to be informed voters, and we're glad to be here tonight to help you down that path. But at this point, there's not a whole lot the governor can do about this mess. It really falls largely to the legislature.
Time. Mr. Noble?
This is a very big and complex issue. Let me boil it down into four facts. Number one, the utilities are trying to steal $9 billion of your money. Number one. Number two, my policy is real simple. We want all our money back. And people ought to go to jail. Fact number three, the reason we have it is because the legislature is a bought and paid for wholly owned subsidiary of the utilities in this state. Fact four, I have said that we ought to have a special prosecutor to permanently investigate Congress legislation utilities. Nobody else, right, if a governor, has supported that. I've said every one of them, Democrat and Republican, ought to give their campaign contributions back, which is a little more than legalized bribery. Nobody else has done that, including the guy sitting at the other end of the table. We have got to fundamentally take the power of the legislature and its corrupt relationship with utilities and break it in half because that's the only way, the only way that your utility bills are going to be more fair, and it's the only way we're ever going to get a utility policy and a diversified energy, solar, wind, all these other things. But we can't have any of those until we first break that symbiotic death grip between the legislators and the utilities that are basically conspiring to rob us of our money.
Representative Smith?
It's really real clear. If we want a future where hard-working South Carolinians can afford their power bills, we've got to deal with the real issues that are causing that and the ways to change it. And you know, there's two groups that have been fighting on your behalf and making sure ages ago, years ago, saying that this was the wrong way to go was the Sierra Club. They were in there fighting, they said, this investment, it's stealing from our people, it's wrong. Conservation voters, they were there talking about it before any of us even knew there was a problem. They were saying it was wrong. They had the opportunity to endorse anyone on this table for a governor who could be there to fix it and to bring rates down. And unanimously, both of those organizations have endorsed my campaign. Because we can all yell at the TV all we want, but I'm ready to govern, right? I'm ready to win a race and govern and bring utilities down. So how are we going to do it? We're going to have an energy policy that works for South Carolina and South Carolinians, not for a utility company. And they know this, and we've worked already to pass some meaningful legislation that even opened the door for even solar power to come in this state. It's called Act 236, and me and a few colleagues of mine got it done together. And we're going to expand it, lift the cap off and deliver thousands of new jobs and billions of new investment. We're also going to make sure that some of the highest power bills that are in South Carolina come in some of the poorest homes, right? Because they're not energy efficient. I'm going to help those people, those hard-working South Carolinians, with something called the PACE program. And we're going to make sure if you're paying a power bill, we can provide you the resources to weatherize your home and bring the cost of your utilities down. And that will bring, and it pays for itself. We're doing this in a small measure. You know what? The governor can lead and do these things. I know that. I've had the experience of doing that. And as your governor, I will do it. I'll bring rates down, I'll make South Carolina more competitive, it'll attract industry here. So people can be bomb throwers all they want. And you know, it's a lot easier to blow things up, it's a lot harder to build. I'm about building this, and I'm going to build this out of Carolina, and we're going to move our state forward. Thank you.
The next question is tied to the failed nuclear project. Each of you will get only one minute to answer, starting with Margarene Willis. Have you accepted any campaign contributions from any businesses related to the VC Summer nuclear project? For example, SCEG, SCANA, Sandy Cooper, or AN Dominion Electric?
No. But I have a minute, and I want to say this. I urge you to ask both of my competitors exactly what they can do as governor. Look, I'm the lady who speaks the truth. And they give you a lot of promises, Phil's going to blow it up, James is going to get it done, but they don't have the power. They should stay where they are and keep working. If James really wants to get this done, he should stay in the legislature. And Phil, good luck.
Representative Smith, one minute.
Sure. In this campaign, and we've worked on this somewhat together, Senator Scott, I believe that if you're on any of the rate-making policies in other states, you shouldn't be able to accept any contributions from those entities. I think it's a conflict of interest. Over the lifetime of my service, in 22 years, I've received a handful of donations from those organizations. In this campaign, I've received none, I've received a couple, and I've returned all of them back. But the fact is this, you know, I've served the people of South Carolina. I'm a combat veteran who's risked my life for the people of our state. A couple of dollars in a campaign contribution is not going to change that. And everything that I've got has gone to nonprofits and charities in the districts that I serve. John knows that, I'm sure you've accepted a good chunk as well, so I'm sure you've built something.
Mr. Noble?
I haven't taken any money from any utilities. I haven't taken any money from any political action committees, period, none, zero. And if any Democrat or Republican stands up and tells you they want to do something about corruption, they want to do something about the utility mess, they want to do something about the legalized bribery that passes off as campaign contributions, ask them two questions. Did you take their money and did you give it back?
For the next round of questions, you all will have two minutes each for the following questions. Governor Henry McMaster announced a tax reform proposal that would exempt military and law enforcement retirees from paying state taxes on retirement income. Would you support endorsing a bill of this magnitude that would apply to military veterans, retired first responders, firefighters, and peace officers? We start off with Ms. Willis.
I'm not exactly sure what's behind Governor McMaster's thinking here. I think it's bad policy and just bad for the state of South Carolina and for human beings in general that we essentially say certain people are heroes and certain people aren't. And so why are we just giving tax breaks to the military folks and the first responders, et cetera? Surely they are heroes, but what about our teachers? You know, what about our state employees, the DSS workers who work so hard for solar and money? Why are we leaving these people out? So I don't understand, other than pandering for votes, they would do this. Because I think we're all fighting great battles, and we should recognize everyone who we deem to be a hero. So I want to understand what Governor McMaster thinks. But I would extend, if you're going to have a tax cut for one person, you need to have it for the heroes that we all are.
Representative Smith?
I think Ms. Willis is right. I share a lot of her sentiment in this respect. I think we need wholesale tax reform, comprehensive tax reform, that helps us be more competitive. And, you know, we got to do better on our state employees. We need to be careful about what we give away before we're making sure we're taking care of the fundamentals of state government and its operations. And so I think before we do any more massive giveaways, we need to make sure we're taking care of the fundamentals of state government.
Mr. Noble?
I think that's right. I mean, the only reason that Henry McMaster does most anything is he figures he's going to pander to somebody who's going to get him some votes in Republican primary. And that's about what that's about, in my humble opinion. We ought to base income tax on income, how much you make. That's what it ought to be based on, not based on who gets this tax break, who gets that tax break. If you make a lot of money, you ought to pay a lot of taxes. If you don't make that money, you're going to pay that tax. It is the politics that perverse this system. It's the politics of special interests and lobbyists that get those tax breaks, that get those deductions. And we got to take that tax system, just like everything else in this broken dysfunctional government, and reform it radical, or else we're going to continue with the same kind of abuse we've got today.
For the next question, you all, all three of you all have two minutes. What are your plans for funding South Carolina infrastructure systems such as transportation, education, prison systems? What are specific underfunded needs in South Carolina that your administration would address? Representative Smith?
Sure. All of these are priorities. You know, it doesn't happen that, you know, you wake up one morning and realize the roads are crumbling, our schools aren't doing the work that they should, and lord, the horrific events at Lee Corruptions Institute should never happen in 2018 in South Carolina or anywhere. We all should be outraged by what took place there and concerned that this is not who we are as a people, and we must demand better. This is, this is what happens when you get Republican control, right? I mean, they've been running this state into the ground for two decades now, and it's time to change course. It is so time for the needed change that we all need. And it's all about setting the priorities. And as governor, that's what I'll do. My executive budget will make it clear that we're going to fund the teacher salaries that we need to recruit and retain quality teachers. We're going to make sure that we fund our state agencies, we provide competitive wages, not just at the Department of Corrections, but the work being done at DSS and DJJ are critical to the lives of so many of our youth and what's happening in our agencies that are working with our seniors. We've had a massive increase in neglect cases with seniors because we're not funding adult protective services. It is directly related to the decisions that have been made by a ruling Republican majority over the last 22 decades. John, we've been working like heck to change this. You know what can change it? The leadership from a governor who's going to make these issues a priority. And we have the experience, we can bring Republicans and Democrats together on priorities that really matter. I know, because we did that when we had a Democratic governor, we got First Steps to School Readiness passed, we got investment, we're raising teacher salaries nearly to above the southeastern average. The leadership of a governor that doesn't throw bombs or cast aspersions, but builds consensus. A governor that can unify our state, that has a shared aspiration on all these issues for our entire state, and I'll do that.
Ms. Willis?
Well, this is a mess. You want to start with the state employees pension fund? $23 billion in the hole. You want to talk about the state employees' medical trust? $10 billion in the hole. We've already talked about the $9 billion hole in the ground over at VC Summer. Look, not to mention the infrastructure, the crumbling roads, everything else, all the problems we have, we're not, but here's the bottom line. You know what it takes? It takes more money. No matter how much leadership you want to espouse, if you don't have the money, then you're whistling in the wind. And so I didn't hear any plan here to raise money. I have plans to raise money. Here's what we're going to do. We're going to get creative. I am all in for any type of gaming, for casino gambling, our competitor states have it, our neighbors, as long as you can regulate it and you can tax it, we can raise money for these projects. In addition, we're going to find other types of businesses that will come to this state and that will help us and that will raise money. Because this is the number one job.
I'm sorry, Ms. Willis, hold on one second. Everyone, please make sure that you give them their respect to answer the question. Thank you very much. Go ahead, you have 45 more seconds.
Thank you. Again, it is the number one job of the governor to take the Department of Commerce and to work with the counties and to raise the money we need for infrastructure, the money we need to pay our state employees fairly, the money we need to fix the problems that we have out there in our state. Because if you don't have the money, you can't do the work. Now, there are other alternatives, there are bond bills, there are ways that surely we can cut some costs here and there, but at the end of the day, our legislature is the one that ultimately decides where the money is spent. And they haven't been doing a very good job of taking care of our basic needs in this state for a very long time.
Mr. Noble?
There's lots of things we can talk about, about tax reform, this, and dealing with the State House and the way of your business and the lobbyists, et cetera. But I want to take you back to my dear old dad, who was 96, who grappled with the issues of race all his life in South Carolina. And he said, if you're trying to figure out a problem, if race is a factor, it's usually the factor. Well, race is the factor in South Carolina of how our money gets spent. We have a lot of people in legislature. We have a lot of people like Sledge that are just racist. And quite frankly, when it comes to the prisons, they don't care. They don't care. More folks get killed, that's okay, who cares? In most counties, the vast majority of people in public schools are black. They don't care. They don't care. They don't put the money in it, they don't put the energy in it, they don't put the focus in it. Affordable housing. See anybody caring about that? Serious, serious family and child support? You see anybody talking about that? You see anybody talking about trying to deal with criminal justice reform in a reasonable, intelligent way? No. And the reason is because the elephant in the room in South Carolina is race. And if we don't have a governor who understands that and is willing to look at every single problem that we have and say, "What is the impact of this on one-third of the state of South Carolina?", then they shouldn't be your governor. Thank you.
We are down to the final question for the gubernatorial candidates. You all will have a minute to answer. What, excuse me, would you support a law that would stiffen penalties for hate crimes that occur because of someone's gender, race, religion, or sexual orientation? Representative Smith, one minute.
Yes, and I already have. We came within four votes, I believe, was Senator Scott, and nearly passed hate crimes legislation about 10 years ago. I think it's long overdue. When we look at the horrific events at Mother Manuel, the fact that we and our own courts could not prosecute that case as a hate crime, and we had to depend upon the federal government, was wrong. I want to have hate crime legislation passed in South Carolina because it will reflect our values of our people. And we ought to be able to enforce that, so as governor, I'll support that effort, and when the bill hits my desk, I'll sign it. Thank you.
Ms. Willis?
Yes, I will support that bill, and I will sign it as well. And it hurts my heart here tonight to hear what's being discussed, particularly with Phil. I'm not saying he's wrong, I'm just saying he isn't offering any solutions to a problem that we're all facing. We're all people of dignity, we're all God's children, and we've got to find a way to heal these divines. We've got to find a way to come back to loving our neighbors. We are in God's house tonight, and I want to urge each of you to remember that as you walk down the road to Jericho, you have a choice. Will you love your neighbor, or will you pass him by? For me, I'm stepping forward to run for governor, because this hurts my heart, and I want to love my neighbor.
Mr. Noble?
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. There's also another, what I call, existing hate crime out there, which is the Heritage Act, which keeps local communities from deciding what they're going to do about taking down Confederate monuments or leaving them up. Every community ought to make their own decisions, and they're going to be tough, and they're going to be hard, but every community ought to be able to make their own decisions. And today, my writing mate and I, Gloria Tenu, stood before the Van Tylman monument and said, "We support repeal of the Heritage Act." We're the only campaign ticket, Democrat or Republican, that has done that. Because we believe that that is the first step we need in this state to begin to have some racial healing and honesty, and hopefully come together to be the kind of United States we need to be. Thank you.